All right, we'll call a regular meeting of the City Council of Missouri City to order and state that the notice for this meeting was duly posted. All the City Council are present. You will stand. Our Boy Scout troop number 1003 is going to post our colors and lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
And we got a Cub Scout. That's right, we got a Cub Scout troop, too. I know. We got help from the big scouts helping the little scouts here. Those are big flags for those kids. Oh, we got the honor guard behind them. We got everybody here.
All right.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I think we need to give those kids a hand. Very good. Sometimes we don't have anybody in rent and now we got...
First of all, I think we all need to, you know, say our prayers and thoughts are with the people in Boston after that tragedy today that has struck our country again. And I know that there were lives lost and many injured. And once again, our, you know, public servants were there, our police and fire, Boston happened to be there and took their lives in their own hands in rescuing many of those people and rendering aid. But, you know, I just think we need to be thinking about those people. They were trying to enjoy an event, joyous event, and we've got women, children, and men who were injured, mangled, and everything else. And it's a shame that things like that happen in this country. It happens in many other countries, and we read about it, we see it on TV. We just don't think about that it happens here after 9/11 and the school shootings and such. But it's a shame that it's come to that and something that we all need to be very cognizant of, aware of, and make sure that we're careful and thank our, um, thank our prayers and such that we don't have it here. But anyway, speaking of that, I need a proclamation that says, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, and emergency medical services, and when an emergency occurs, just like today, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of the information obtained from citizens who telephone the Missouri City Telecommunications Center. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the vital link between the citizens and victims, and they are the first and most critical contact that our citizens have with any of our emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are professional, who's behind the scenes and often unrecognized factions are responsible for helping protect our community, whereas the Missouri City telecommunicators have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and they have exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, I Allen Owen, on behalf of the City Council and all of the citizens of Missouri City, do hereby proclaim the week of April 14th through 20th, 2013, be designated as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the City of Missouri City in honor of those men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Because who's gonna... All right, stand up back there, ladies. Come on up here. Part of this is exactly right. They work in a dark room over there and the, and nobody gets to see their pretty faces. So it's our opportunity to say thank you to these ladies and guys that work over there in that department. And bear in mind, there's some sitting over there right now taking those calls as these ladies are here. So thank you all on behalf of us and the citizens for doing what you do 24 hours a day, seven days a week, holidays, all those good times, so thank you. Robert's gonna take a picture?
I have been.
Who knows?
That Robert is something.
He doesn't know.
It's automatic, Robert.
You gotta push. Push the button.
Pushing.
Don't he get one of the Cub Scouts in here to show you? There you go.
Wrong button. Oh, that's a good one.
Mayor. Mayor, I thought it would be nice if you gave us an opportunity to have a picture taken with those beautiful ladies because we're equally supportive of them and we love them.
They know that.
Robert? Thank you. No, thank you.
All right. All right, this other proclamation says that whereas April marks the anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act of 1968, we sought to eliminate discrimination in housing opportunities and to affirmatively further housing choices for all Americans. And whereas the ongoing struggle for dignity and housing opportunities for all is not the exclusive province of the federal government. And whereas vigorous local efforts to combat discrimination can be as effective, if not more so, than the federal government. And whereas illegal barriers to equal opportunity in housing, no matter how subtle, diminish the rights of all. Now therefore, I Allen Owen, Mayor, and let it be resolved that in the pursuit of the shared goal and responsibility of providing equal housing opportunities for all men and women, the City Council of the City of Missouri City does hereby join the national celebration by proclaiming April 2013 as Fair Housing Month and encourages all agencies, institutions, and individuals, public and private, in Missouri City to abide by the spirit of the fair housing law. Anybody here? Gary, you come do that. Yes.
Hold on, it's locked.
Huh?
We could get the bulk of the committee to receive it.
Oh, yeah? Huh? The housing committee?
We could get our committee.
We have a housing committee.
Oh, the CBG committee?
Our CBG committee.
Let's take a picture.
Okay, come on, Dan. Who's on the CBG committee?
John, Lloyd, and Bob.
Oh.
No, it's okay, Mayor. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
Yeah, I think so.
Gary's not that beautiful at those ladies, so it's okay.
I have no argument.
Let Floyd stand in front.
Can you see that?
See, hugging, Robert.
By the way, I gave Caroline about 50 posters here. Give her a date.
Thanks.
She was.
All right. Come on, Sonia. This proclamation says that whereas cancer is a group of diseases characterized by uncontrolled growth and spread of abnormal cells, which if not controlled, can result in death. And whereas 1,660 million new cases of cancer are estimated to occur in the United States in 2013, and approximately 112,230 new cases in Texas with nearly 37,180 expected to die from cancer. And whereas the American Cancer Society is a voluntary community-based health organization in the United States dedicated to eliminating cancer as a major health problem, and whereas the Relay for Life is a celebration of life benefiting the American Cancer Society. Now therefore, I Allen Owen, Mayor of the City of Missouri City, and the citizens of Missouri City do hereby proclaim the day of April 26, 2013, as Relay for Life Day in Missouri City, and I ask all the citizens, businesses, and civic organizations and council members to participate in the Relay for Life events to be held at Oyster Creek Park and to contribute to the health, safety, welfare, and the quality of life that we enjoy in Missouri City. Do you want to say something about it?
Missouri City employees have actually formed a team. Gary Smith got us all together. We're called the Missouri City Core. I put some flyers in the back if anyone's interested in joining or supporting us. It's April 26th. It's gonna be fun, 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, if y'all want to come out and join us.
Paul, you're having the picture, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
We'll push the camera as far as she can with me in the picture. Our team has 17 members. We're looking for more. We have raised $765 to contribute toward the cause with a modest goal of 1,000, which I hope we well exceed. And for our overall community, the event has raised over $66,000 so far. As good as that is, I went and visited my mother over the weekend, and Baytown has the largest Relay for Life event in the state of Texas. I forgot to memorize how much they raised there, but our community can outdo that if we organize. We're making our inroads. Thank you.
All right. Item four on the agenda is public comments. I did not have anyone sign up for public comments. Item five are staff reports. This is a report regarding the proposed update for the bicycling pedestrian mobility plan.
I'm Valerie Marvin, Capital Improvement Program Administrator in Department of Public Works, and this here is Jeff Whitaker. He's with Kim Lee Horn &amp; Associates. He's the consultant who helped us put this study together. For decades, starting after World War II and accelerating in the 1970s, we have moved away from traditional integrated neighborhoods in the U.S. to focus on separating land uses. Living in one area, shopping in another, working in a third, the basis of the zoning process that Missouri City adopted in 1981 was focused on this concept as that was the trend at the time. By design, this leads to increased automobile usage and heavier demand on the street network and a greater percentage of household income spent on transportation. It is staff's opinion that we need to start reversing this trend and focus on integrated developments where they are appropriate. One of the tools to accomplish those is through the concept of complete streets. Complete streets is a simple concept, and a lot of regulations are driving us in this direction. The concept is to make streets safe and appropriate for all users and not just the automobile. This includes automobiles, pedestrians, bicyclists, transit, all users that may want to use the road. Looking at the slides, some of the goals for complete streets, there are typical, a couple of things that stick out to me on these slides is looking at the flexibility of complete streets and increasing the ways that a street can be used, like I mentioned before, the pedestrians and bicycles. Also, looking at environmental and environmentally unsustainable design, designing streets or other facilities that will be with us over time. That's something that's important to us. Looking at where people are going, according to the National Household Transit Survey, nearly 40% of trips that people make are within three miles of where they live, and 17% are less than one mile. Of that 17%, nearly 50 are driven. What we're looking at is trying to increase the number of trips that can be done without an automobile. There are a lot of benefits that come out of increasing physical activity, health benefits being one of them. Over the years, the amount of student, the number of students who walk to school has decreased. Safety is another benefit of complete streets concept. Economic development is another benefit. Complete streets have several benefits, such as increasing transit or walking to the, or using bikes to get to their destinations. People living in Dallas, Texas, according to one study, saved an average of nine, over $9,000 annually by switching to taking transit rather than driving their automobile. Again, on the slides is an example of what complete streets might look at. In a particular situation we have here is a roadway that has a rather large median opening with a couple of intersections incorporating some striping and directional arrows that helps drivers understand how to utilize that particular intersection that has a huge safety Another before and after example shows where a potential pedestrian crossing could be. A little bit of sidewalk was added, some columns to act as, what do you call those again?
Those are just entryway features. This is in Burleson, Texas. It's the downtown area of Burleson. They had an issue with parking, and the issue was that they didn't have enough parking. The issue was that someone had to walk a quarter of a mile from the adjacent parking lot, which is if you walk from the back of a Walmart parking lot, you know you're walking about the same distance. So what the goal of this project was, was to attract people to use the adjacent parking lots instead of driving around in a circle looking for a parking spot. So we did it with a combination of wayfinding, a combination of striping, and making it look a lot more attractive with some banners and stuff.
And another example is of a divided roadway, looks kind of barren, has overhead lines, not a whole lot of interest going on, something that could be accomplished with some redevelopment policies and bicycle striping, some crosswalks, a little landscaping, decorative lighting, and signals, for example.
One of the things I'll add to this is that what this picture is showing is things can be done in phases. Not everything needs to be done at once. You don't have to do everything all at once. Um, a lot of times you'll do the striping first, maybe a little landscaping here, and you'll see on the next slide that this was like kind of a phase one, and here's a phase two of the similar type of concept.
And so you might notice in this one that it incorporates a roundabout. A roundabout is a tool that can be used not only from a bicycle and pedestrian perspective but also from the automobile perspective in that it slows traffic down while increasing movement. It helps with mobility and keeps traffic of all users moving rather than being stopped at a signal. So with the bicycle mobility, Bicycle and Pedestrian Mobility Plan that we've developed, we've met with staff and we've come up with various goals for Missouri City to have a bicycle and pedestrian mobility plan. It's an overall plan that's comprehensive in nature, meaning we look at all modes of travel, and we looked at it citywide, and we also took into consideration the comments that we got from the previous study that we did. You might remember on the major FM 1092, 2234, our major FM roads and State Highway 6, we did bicycle study on that as well. And the comments that we got from residents were overwhelmingly that we needed to look at the neighborhood level. So what we did with this plan was to look at increasing safety for all users, identifying which treatments go with which types of roadways, treatments being maybe a bicycle lane, we'll get into that in a little bit, and also looking at the best treatments for pedestrians as well, so not just bicycles but also pedestrians.
So with looking to the plan for bicyclists, it's very similar to complete streets, which Valerie already had, already has mentioned. A lot of people ride a bicycle for recreational use. That's part of the common theme you see in Missouri City going down Oyster Creek Trail and some of those facilities. But also, some people may make small trips. You know, we're targeting the short trips. And when you're planning for bicyclists, if you see the graph in front of you, there's really four types of riders. There's the strong and fearless. Those are the type of people that you're gonna see riding down State Highway 6, and they don't, they don't care, they're gonna ride down State Highway 6. There's another group, and I fit in this group, it's the green group, it's the enthusiastic confident. We're gonna ride, I'm probably not gonna ride on a facility like State Highway 6, but I'm gonna ride at most facilities. But then you have this large orange group where it's a lot of people who might want to ride, but they're kind of scared to. So when we were developing this plan, we were really targeting the orange group, those individuals who, if they had the opportunity, they may go out and do it. And so when we're developing the plan, we're trying to keep that in mind, is we're not, we're really designing for about 60%. This came from a study done in Portland, and it's been kind of used over there. But then there's about 30 or 40% of the people who are saying, "I'm never gonna ride a bike." And so that's also a part of the population that's out there. So we're targeting that orange group.
So moving through the planning process, like I mentioned before, we met with various staff throughout the city, including Parks and Recreation, and Jeff did a lot of field work, going out into the field and gathering data, looking at the existing conditions throughout the city, throughout the neighborhoods, and developed some initial recommendations that we've reviewed a few times. And then, excuse me, went through a public process where we held a, an open house and invited residents to come in and have a look at the recommendations and look at our maps and provide us any comments that they felt were necessary in response. That meeting was held on March 5th, and we noted a few public comments that stuck out to us, one of which was, "We ride bikes within Quill Valley and ready to go further away." And what that tells us is that, yes, they're at the neighborhood level, but they're ready to go to the next neighborhood as well. So where is it they want to go? Is it from, say, Quill Valley up here to City Hall? Is it to go down to Highway 6 to do a little shopping or grab lunch? Whatever the case may be. What we looked at is looking at routes, looking at the local level, the neighborhood level, and identifying those roadways that will best fit the purpose of pedestrian and bicycle improvements to get people to and from their destinations without having to necessarily go on those major roadways.
And talking to some of the residents when they were visiting, one of the things that, one of the biggest things I took from it is a lot of them who ride on Oyster Creek Trail, they wanted to be able to ride Oyster Creek Trail. They didn't want to go park and then get their bike out and go. They wanted to go from their house to Oyster Creek Trail. So we kept that in mind when we were developing this plan, how do we get to Oyster Creek Trail and some of the other trails around the city without necessarily having to drive and park in a parking lot and get there?
So we developed a map with a bicycle network on it, and I wanted to mention how we came up with the particular routes. And like I mentioned a second ago, we looked at different roads and how they best will hold treatments. Not all roads are created equally. Not all of them are gonna receive treatments. So we looked at which routes would provide the safest routes for people to travel on and connectivity as well. How do, how can they get from neighborhood to neighborhood and get to the destination that they're looking for? The width of the road, the volume of vehicles, that also played a factor into which types of treatments we chose for each roadway. And then, one thing I also wanted to point out is that as we go through this presentation on the report, just wanted to point out that what the implementation expectations are, because you're gonna see a lot of information in this report. And what we're looking to do is to provide an overall vision for what we would like to see in the future so that as funding becomes available, as opportunities come available to implement these recommendations, that we have an idea where to put our investments and to guide that investment over time.
So I'm gonna dive into some of the recommendations. Like Valerie said, there's a lot of information in here, but I'm gonna go through some of the treatments we looked at, just so that when you look at the map, you can know what we're talking about. One of the common treatments was a bicycle lane. This is just striping, and in areas, most of the areas we looked at this, we looked at where there's excess existing pavement. Some of the roads you drive on are pretty wide, and, you know, you'll see a lot of bicycles drive on those road, ride on those road area. This is basically taking that extra space and providing the space. A lot of times what we hear is people just don't know where to ride, so if they have a dedicated lane, they can see where they ride, and the cars know to stay out of that lane, generally speaking. Another type of treatment is a, is a bicycle with parking. There are some facilities in Missouri City that already have existing parking out there, so there's really not wide enough for two lanes. So what we did, it's wide enough for a lane, a bike lane, and on-street parking. So we just took those facilities that had the room out there and kind of made recommendations of providing that place so there'd be a stripe, so the people would know where to park. I don't know if you drive around and when you see people parallel park, sometimes they don't get far enough over. So what that stripe does, it helps them, pushes them a little bit closer to the curb, and then the bike has stripes so they know where to go and the cars can drive as well. An example of this, you'll see a little bit later, is Glen Lakes Drive. There's a really wide lane and this on-street parking lot right there. If you kind of tighten up the lanes, you can put a bike lane on there relatively easily. Another example is a bicycle buffer. Like if you remember when I described, we're trying to design for the 60%, we want to make it safe and encouragable. People like space between the vehicles and bicycles. A bicycle buffer gives you that five-foot space. It's still on the road, but if you're driving, if a car's passing you at 40 miles an hour, there's a large wind right there, this five feet really helps that wind issue. So in the areas where we had some extra pavement, our future widening, this is an example of something we could do. Another recommendation is a shared facility. This simply is just a pavement marker on the ground that kind of shows vehicles and bicycles where to be. It's really intended to be an information to the motors that are out there seeing that bicycle. This is a bicycle route, so be aware of them. A study that was done at the University of Texas showed that when the share rows were placed and the signs were put up, that the vehicles tend to drive a little bit slower, and they fall behind bicycles a little bit farther. So this is really just a safety feature to benefit the bicycles. In general, these type of facilities, bicycles are gonna ride anyway, whether there's a shared marker or not, but we're just trying to increase that safety a little bit for the bicycles. Another recommendation that we had in the central part of Missouri City was these wayfinding signs. The first time I started, I was riding around the central city, I got a little lost. And if you had wayfinding signs to kind of point you towards the city center or something like that, it would be helpful, and bicyclists can start making a route to go from one end of the neighborhood to the other. And the reason we like the wayfinding dots is they're a little bit smaller than those share rows, they're a little less large on the pavement, and homeowners tend to like these a little bit more than the bigger markings.
Easier to maintain.
They're easier to maintain as well, and they're also more cost-effective than the other markers. Another one that you see, you see a lot of this in the Sienna area, is the side pass. This photo is actually in Missouri City. This is, this is the separated facilities. These are the facilities that really speak to the 60% where they'll ride on the pass. We also have trails. That's pretty common. What we did, this plan, was taking the existing 2009 plan, and really what we were looking at is to make those connections to those trails. So in this plan, you'll see some connections to those trails, like we have one connection that goes over Oyster Creek to connect basically State Highway 6 to the trail, which is a, seemed like a pretty obvious connection to get the people across the, across the trail. So here are some, I'm gonna go through brief examples just to kind of go over. I've already mentioned Glen Lakes. This is one where there's current on-street parking. If we move that stripe a little bit, there's room to add a bicycle lane. So we have a traveling bicycle lane and on-street parking. It's pretty much what's out there today, it's just defined a little bit better. And also the shared facility. As you can see, Double Lakes is kind of a residential area. We would just suggest adding some signage and marking to let people know that this facility can be used for bikes. The second part of the report is the pedestrian phase. The pedestrian phase took a little bit different approach. We were looking at improving the pedestrian experience, which goes from just the feeling of walking to safety, so both for health reasons and also for safety reasons. So the way we approached the pedestrian element is we, we divided the city into different districts, and there were three main districts that we looked at with two growth districts. And the main districts were the State Highway 6 commercial district, which I'll go into you, go into a little detail. We were trying to group these districts into areas so we knew what improvements were in each district area. So some of the pedestrian treatment options that we looked at were typical crosswalks, and depending on where the crosswalks are, just the visibility of seeing the crosswalks actually adds safety. There was a research study done by Texas Transportation Research Board that divided into three different categories, and the lower category being just markings. The sign and markings actually helped to slow people down because people were aware of it. Then you get a little bit higher on that study, you can get into what we call median refuges. If you can imagine trying to cross a 40-foot street, you can look to the right, and by the time you get halfway through, there might be someone coming to your left. So if you put a median in the middle, there's a safe location where someone can actually stand if a car comes. Some other examples that we have are corridor improvements. If you think about walking, the corridor, I'll go into detail because I have an example, is Lake Olympia. Lake Olympia has quite a bit of traffic volume and relatively high speeds. So when you walk down that, if you're at night, lighting might help that facility, as well as traffic calming. And traffic calming can be many things. It can be bulbouts, which means the street's kind of narrowing a little bit. That helps two things. And depending on where the crosswalks are, just the visibility of seeing the crosswalks actually adds safety. There was a research study done by Texas Transportation Research Board that divided into three different categories, and the lower category being just markings. The sign and markings actually helped to slow people down, because people are aware of it. Then you get a little bit higher on that study. You can get, get into what we call median refuges. If you can imagine trying to cross a forty-foot street, you can look to the right, and by the time you get halfway through, there might be someone coming to your left. So if you put a median in the middle, there's a safe location where someone can actually stand if a car comes. Some other examples that we have are corridor improvements. If you think about walking, the corridor, I'll go into detail, is have an example, is Lake Olympia. Lake Olympia has quite a bit of traffic volume and relatively high speeds. So when you walk down that, if you're at night, lighting might help that facility, as well as traffic calming. And traffic calming can be many things. It can be bulbouts, which means the street's kinda narrowing a little bit. That helps two things. It helps slow traffic down a little bit. And also if a pedestrian's coming, he's got less distance to walk across, because the curves are close to each other. You know, just improving a corridor by putting sidewalks, you know, it's frustrating sometimes when you walk down and there's a broken sidewalk or there's a missing gap of a sidewalk. So we were looking at the key locations in the city where to actually make those type of corridor improvements. These pedestrian treatments are a little bit more of the advanced treatments. You can actually use a signal. If you have a high pedestrian area and you really need to cross the street, and you're crossing like a State Highway six, a signal's probably the best option, other than being separated, because you probably want to physically stop the vehicles. When we were doing this plan, like I mentioned, we were looking at the city facilities, parks, schools, and trails. We were trying to tie neighborhoods to destinations. That was our goal, looking how those neighborhoods can get to the destinations they want to go. Like I mentioned, we divided the city into, into three main corridor districts. State Highway six commercial district, the city central district, and then the city hall district, as well as two growth districts, where there's not much out there today, but there's potential future growth in that area. And we wanna remember to use these principles when you're designing at the beginning, because it's much easier to do it at the beginning than to go back and retrofit these facilities. So that's kind of the vision of this plan, is to paint a picture of some facility types that can be used. Here's an example pedestrian district. The pedestrian districts are outlined. This is the State Highway six commercial district. It shows about six specific projects along with the sidewalk gaps. So we were trying to prioritize these sidewalk gaps, as well as show potentially some pedestrian improvements. And I'll highlight two different pedestrian improvements. One of them is at Riverstone and Cross Lakes. There's a Coles right there. And there's no sidewalk that connects from, from Riverstone to the Coles. So part of that was adding a sidewalk, but in addition to that, to connect to the neighborhood. So to make some crossing that goes to the median, that's well signed, so people walking from the, the neighborhood into that shopping center can have a safe place to cross. Another improvement that we show is a potential concept of a roundabout at Lake Olympia Peninsula. This accomplishes two things. One, a roundabout actually can carry more traffic than your always stop, or even your signalized intersection. It has the ability to produce more traffic. But also has a traffic calming effect, so it could slow that traffic down a lot. When I drove down Lake Olympia, there was a lot of pedestrian crossing signs. So there's a lot of pedestrian activity probably on that street, given the schools nearby. So the roundabout would have a side benefit of slowing that traffic down, as well as keeping the capacity that's out there.
So to recap what we've talked about so far, why has this study been performed? Like I mentioned before, we wanted to respond to the citizens' comments that we received to look more at a neighborhood level, for implementing pedestrian bicycle improvements, where, you know, where we need to put our investments, to develop a vision for the future, to, to know where those need to go, to have an overall comprehensive look at the city as a whole. Transition to complete streets concept gives us a direction to follow to make that transition. When will the recommended, when will the recommendations be implemented? Again, as the need arises, or as development occurs, or as the money becomes available? Growth or development can increase the traffic. You might remember from our traffic management plan that traffic volumes are expected to increase over time. This is a method that we could use to try to mitigate some of that increase. Road rehabilitation or reconstruction? Roadway maintenance and resurfacing? Restriping? How will the recommendations be paid for? Designing into the current, into city projects in the future as we go? That's one method that we can use. Gregory, for example, is a design contract that we've recently awarded. And we're going to look at using these recommendations on that particular roadway. Right now, there, it's four lanes, and it doesn't have the traffic volume to support four lanes. So we will look at reducing the number of lanes to one in each direction for a total of two, and then have the bicycle lane as well. And that will also allow us to increase the width of the sidewalk. Including maintenance activities. So if we go through and either resurface a street or restripe it, we can incorporate those activities as we go. And that, that's a more cost-effective method, like you mentioned before, rather than going back and trying to do this brand-new, to redo a road, when you can maintain it with the striping, that's a little more cost-effective. And then, of course, developer contributions or implementation. If, if developer comes in and they have something they're gonna do, we have a vision here to ask them to incorporate these types of improvements as they develop their land. And then, potential grant sources. Having a study like this makes us more competitive in showing that we're serious about bicycle and pedestrian improvements, and that we have an idea of what we wanna do with this money if you give it to us. And so that completes our presentation.
Let me ask you. Obviously, as we're doing our hike and bike trails, we're doing those wide enough for hiking and biking. Is there a prohibition against riding a bike on a sidewalk? I thought there used to be.
I actually got called out by somebody.
You did?
I ride.
I mean, yeah, I do too.
The police might correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty certain that it's still prohibition under state law against riding a bicycle on a sidewalk.
That includes skateboards too?
I'll defer to Assistant Chief Pearson on that, but I don't believe he addressed that in the law.
Should get presenables?
Really? Huh? And bicycles or not? That doesn't even make sense to me. All right, the other question is, you're telling me that in many of our situations, the street itself is wide enough that we can stripe that bike lane without affecting the traffic at all?
Correct. And the individual map that goes with that type of a treatment will show you which roadways we propose.
I mean, Glen Lakes, you're saying that, that parking lane, there is room to add a bike lane on the, on the inside of that parking lane and still, guys, I see cars almost hit the parked cars as it is. You gotta be kidding me. And I ride that street every day. Okay? You gotta be kidding me.
It is something that we definitely would have to look, from an engineering standpoint and everything, but on, on every situation. However, I, I guess I'll use the word tightening the feel of the street, does have a tendency to slow the traffic down. So there is, is a traffic calming effect that can be occurred, that could occur. The other thing that we always gotta take into account is emergency vehicle, particularly the big red truck access, to make sure that we don't narrow something down enough that they have a problem with traveling down the street. Something like a bike lane or, or a parking lane on Glen Lakes, there's usually not a car solidly along that, that line. So, so it's usually not an issue. But it is something that we will look at on a case-by-case basis.
So could you designate that park lane as either?
You could.
I mean, I, yeah, huh?
Yes, you could.
Yeah, it does. I mean, it's like you said, it's, there's not that many people who park their car along Glen Lakes for a reason. They don't wanna run over. But, I mean, in those particular situations, could you not designate that parking lane as both parking and/or bike?
You could do it as a shared use.
I ride it as a bike.
Another good example, where the roads overbuilt from a traffic standpoint would be McLean Boulevard. McLean Boulevard is a four-lane road, but it's not necessarily needed to be from a purely automotive traffic standpoint. So it could have a similar type of treatment on McLean. Some of the others, by Buffalo Run Park, the roadways around there are wider than the traffic is needed. And there's very minimal pedestrian facilities. There are some sidewalks, but that is something that we could have a look at, relatively inexpensive implementation.
Does this, uh, does this come back to us to approve this plan?
Yes.
Okay. I wanna make sure we get that clear. We haven't approved anything. We're just talking.
We don't have the money. We don't have any money to do.
The other thing is, is that if we approve this plan, then that means that there are ordinances that would need to be changed to match the plan. This plan needs to be coordinated with zoning. Okay. And I just wanna answer the observation, you used no sidewalks over by Coles. If they haven't built anything, we don't require them to build any sidewalks. So, so I mean, that has to be taken into, you know, kinda build the sidewalks as you build, fill in the land. And if it's vacant, then.
Well, I'm sorry, council member, I'm sorry.
And, and, but I just wanna make sure that, you know, it get coordinated with all the different things. So when we say that we're approving the plan, we approve the plan.
Right.
Sure. And two, two points. One, for council's information, we did present to P&amp;Z and ask for feedback from P&amp;Z. And we're waiting to see if they provide us any feedback. But the other thing is, what we would be adopting is a set of concepts and goals and, and guidelines. And as council member Wyatt mentions, that we would have to look at revisions to other city ordinances, infrastructure ordinance, zoning, and everything else. But it's not a mandatory requirement that everything goes in in every location as well. That would be on a case-by-case engineering analysis basis.
Scott, great presentation. I think few of us write, and I'm one of them. I'm in the green zone. But, but the thing is, you know, if you look at the way that things have grown, you do see that there's tons of riders that are there, especially on the weekend. I do see it running down University, all the way cutting through where you just mentioned about Coles, going on Oilfield Road, even though now it's a double lane, they take up that, that one whole lane all the way across, then cuts, go down on Sienna. So I think there are a great opportunity for putting in it. Like you said, it may not be where every subdivision gets a, you know, a bicyclist route. But I think it needs to be, something needs to be looked at, because Easter weekend, I, a guy that, it wasn't a car's fault, but it was a guy who was trying to make a left turn from University to Oilfield Road, ran into a car and fell, because the car stopped pretty quickly. So, and, you know, he was okay, the car, and nothing happened to the car. But, you know, it was just a part that there are several riders that are out there right now. And I think, with this study that's coming out, I think there's some opportunities here. I don't know how we're gonna pay for it, but.
Well, and part of this gets wrapped up into the bond package that's being underconsidered. So which taking, this is part of the reason we've kinda delayed the discussion of parks and rec and the transportation issues, is you have this that we're asking for y'all to consider, that we can then take to the bond committee. And the other one that was coming down your way is the revisions to the parks master plan, which will also then work its way to the bond.
You know, I have one question. When you ride down through, back, I can't think of the street's name. There is already a bicyclist.
Yes, Columbia Blue.
That's right, Columbia Blue, I meant. So was that part of this? Or was that always?
That was actually done in-house by Rego, our street superintendent. This is an occasion where we have a large traffic generator, the school, and trying to get that traffic generator with City Hall. And it's another, in instance, where you have a wider street on Columbia Blue until you get to the asphalt portion, then, then it's really needed from a vehicular standpoint. So that's why that was striped. It was actually, Rego had that concept.
What, what do you do along Cartwright Road? You've got a sidewalk on both sides there.
Yeah.
You ride out on Cartwright Road, you're taking your life.
Has a, has too much road and too small of a right-of-way. As councils are aware, it was originally a two-lane road, open ditch, and, and houses built up alongside of it. So the four-lane road was squeezed, and less right-of-way than would normally be allowed.
All right.
So that was.
And I understand that. And it gets back to my other point. Are there going to be situations, like Cartwright Road, that does have a sidewalk, that we could allow the sidewalk to be used for pedestrian or bicycles? Either or?
That's actually the recommendation in the report.
They'll just widen the sidewalk.
Because there are, there are gonna be situations where there are sidewalks along those major, I raise my hand, I've written down the sidewalk on Cartwright, but I'm only gonna get in the street.
I ride a motorcycle.
The other question I have is, and I know that the signs are posted, why can you not ride a bicycle on the, on the toll road? Where most people who get out and ride any length would probably ride the toll road if, and I saw some people the other day riding it. They obviously didn't read the signs. I have. You're not supposed to ride or walk.
And that's a management decision of the toll road with the highest operating speed on that.
It's not a state.
I would not wanna be on that.
That would not be the same, though the state does have.
No, I mean, in that particular place, you've got shoulders that are wide enough that could be marked for bicycles.
Yeah. And, and maybe our consultant can help me out on this, but for a long time, Tech Stat had a policy against on-street bike lanes on their facilities. And.
Now they actually have a policy where you have to consider.
Yeah. So we could in fact go to the toll road authority, and they could have a bike lane?
I, there would be no prohibition that I can think of under the law. That would be a management decision of the toll road authority. But, but I can't think of a prohibition under the law.
When you're thinking about mobility, and you're talking about people getting out and riding, when you come down, you talk about Lake Olympia Boulevard, for example. You get down to the toll road, you can go to High Tower High School, you could go down to the shopping, you could go all the way into Sienna.
One of the problems that, one thing that I'm looking forward to hearing is the, how do you change the culture? You used to ride years ago, and I'll tell you, one of the, if you're an avid rider, one thing that you recognize, if you ride on streets, the biggest problem is debris, especially if you're riding a skinny wheel.
Five-dollar gas changes the culture.
We, we focus, we call it five-eighths of my system. We just focus on the engineering side, the education, enforcement, encouragement, all the other stuff that goes along to encourage you.
Scott, you know, conceptually, it sounds, it sounds really good. And I like the presentation, because it fit under comprehensive plan with this mobility plan. But in reality, I've been trying to, I've been trying to think, how many people actually go to work by bicycles? I mean, I tried, I, I think I know a lot of people, but I couldn't think of one person going to work by bicycle.
And I agree with you.
I haven't finished. And number two, how many people do I know that go to grocery, to the store, to go to shop by bicycle? I couldn't think of one person. So all this plan, is it more catered toward people who do it for pleasure or for exercise purposes? And then, and another important thing is that, I mean, we have four different terrain, four different districts, and each one is physically designed differently. So we cannot just implement throughout a city. I mean, each area may have more demand and more neat than the other area.
To, to address your first part of your, your comment, you are correct. I mean, when we have a more suburban area like we are here, there are preponderance of trips or more recreational, short trips. If you need a, you know, bag of sugar from the store, you might ride your bike if it's relatively close. But you're not gonna go do your weeks of grocery shopping on that. And I don't believe anybody here will take their bicycle to the medical center or anything like that. So we do shift more towards the recreational side. You are correct in that, in this type of environment. We're not midtown or downtown Houston here. But there is, as council member Smith said, changing the mindset and having bicycles, and this is just the very beginning of it, or pedestrians, being a, a bigger factor, is something that maybe down the road we'll see. And I'm talking a long time down the road. Instead of taking their car to the corner store or something, maybe they'll walk or ride their bicycle, or, or to go pick up something. So you're correct. It's a very valid observation.
See, since, since you isolated the, the demand, so what would be the pop, current population in the city that would ride bicycles? And, you know, and then with the anticipations of, of, of this happening.
For which purpose, Danny? For recreation or?
For, for three, recreation, shopping, and, and go to work, or even visit each other. I mean, so that we, we use the resources equally, you know. So, I mean, it's good. If we have a lot of resources, then we just go ahead and do it.
And to answer the second, or to address the second part of your comment, where we talked about the four districts and the city being different, you're correct. The area that was developed in the 1960s and 1970s was developed to a different streetscape, landscape, development set, what was selling at the time, what was popular at the time versus, say, Highway six area on that. So nothing will be uniform, and probably could be applied across the board, but that's why it was tried to be broken down into districts and the commonalities. So those districts could, could have some common factors in it. But, but you're a hundred percent correct. The different phases of development, if you look at our area of the city and the different ten-year, twenty-year increments, you can see, starting at north, it's a totally different city than it is down south on that. And it's nothing good or bad, it's just how development occurred.
And if you look at the plan down south, it's got a lot of side paths and trails. And when you look north, the roads are a little bit tighter, a little bit slower, and there's more shared paths, shared on-streets.
I have, I have, follow-up on that. I have a question too. I think you had talked about, you know, there was an interest, or there was a quote that, from people from Quill Valley, that would get an opportunity to go to the trails and stuff like that. As the mayor had indicated that. As the mayor had indicated, that currently right now on cart ride, you can't unless you use a sidewalk. So what with this, would there be an opportunity for maybe widening of the sidewalks, similar to what they have in our university, so this way both bystanders and bike riders can go? Because I think, answer to what Councilmember Nguyen was talking about and what the mayor said, I think it gives a purpose of, you can't put it everywhere, but you can tie it to, like, trails and parks and rec center and city center where people can go back and forth to. I think that would be one that I'm interested in personally, not just to have it in every subdivision where I can go around.
And that's exactly what I, we would focus priority on this on, would be connecting activity centers and traffic pedestrian and bicycle traffic generators to each other. That's where you get the low-hanging fruit, the biggest bang for your buck, or whatever analogy you want to use on that. But to say that every street in the city would have a bike path, or every street in the city would have something, that would not be correct. That's a good observation.
And I'd also like to point out that if you...
Go ahead.
I'd also like to point out that if you look at the map, like, say, take Quail Valley for example, you know, it's not gonna be exactly a direct route.
Sure.
But you'll see that we made a connection to get from the Quail Valley, whether it's... Quail Valley East really is one of the main points, say, like, from the tennis center. If you can find your way to the tennis center, we get you across Cartwright, and then we take you through Meadows, Meadow Creek, to get up to Court Road, and then back through Columbia Blue to get you to City Hall. So we do have backways, I guess you could say, to get you through the neighborhoods to your destination, and get you across those types of facilities.
We're trying to get off the facilities that were the easiest to ride on.
So I ask Councilmember Wyatt had talked about, so we're not approving anything?
No. We got a lot of work to do.
Just a study that we're talking about?
This is a study, and this is the plan. From this, and you know, like I said, we'll bring it back for actual adoption. Look for your feedback for tonight. But it is one where this becomes the basis for probably the next 20 years of how you start connecting things and start making, you know, as far as for pedestrians and for bicyclists, be able to get people around.
So as, I think the mayor said, as streets gets widened, or as we widen the park, are we going to allow for this type, so this way that we avoid that Glen Lakes and Cartwright type of situation that we have? So if the Texas Parkway gets widened, are we gonna put something like that into this process?
That would be, the intent of this is we have a council adopted concept that anytime we look at a reconstruction, a street widening, a new construction, that these would be concepts that have to be considered in that analysis on that.
Yeah. But Scott, I guess, can you all come back to us with a recommendation? You know, street striping is relatively inexpensive compared to sidewalks and other things. That would be my suggestion for the start, is that you come back to us with those streets that are capable of being striped today, and are sidewalks that can be utilized for either and both. And let's start there first.
Well, maybe, I mean, that's a good start, but I think, I think maybe you can put them in some priority in terms of what have you. Because coming behold, if somebody come along and want to give up some money, and the plan would support that, you want to have those other things in the plan.
And I think there are some grants and things out there for this type of stuff. And go back to what Don said earlier about HGAC, I think there's some stuff out there for that.
Yeah. The striping, to me, seems like a finished product. I think that we still have to go back a little bit and address some other issues. I think that's greater than that. Number one is, we still talking about culture. And when you say that some parts of the city will have, you know, biking trails and this type of concept, and others want, but we still got to get the whole city to adopt this. The north part of town, mobility plan is getting people from one place to the other as fast and safe as they can. There's not stopping and, you know, kind of smelling the roses kind of thing. So that's something that has to be considered at that point.
Without medians, you mean?
The other is, we got, we got amenities that's in the, is being planned. We got things that we're thinking about that has to do with this part, even this City Hall is for, what's next to City Hall. You know, the way I look at this, there has to be some sort of a composite, not only just bicycles, that has jogging and also walking, to kind of move us into that, that method, especially in areas where folks just want to get from one place to the other. We got to change that concept in order to get this, make this thing work.
Yeah.
That mindset, rather.
That is exactly correct. And the reason we're bringing it to y'all, and we'll bring it for consideration for adoption in the future, is exactly that, is we're just planting the seed right now. And as the city manager said, maybe 20 years from now, we'll have a nice tree out here. But you're right, it's the beginning stages, and we need to agree with the destination we're going, so we can start down that path.
Any other questions? Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item six, is it consent agendas or a motion to approve the consent agendas printed? Who seconded it?
I'd like to, to ask, to discuss item number B of the consent agenda.
Okay.
So can we remove that from the...
Yes, and discuss that individually, yes. So there was a motion to approve A, C, D, and E by Nguyen, and who seconded it? Marshall. Okay, all those in favor? Motion carries. Item B, eight, or six B is consider authorizing agreement for medical director services with Dr. Jose Angel Enzeldua, M.D.
Can you just tell me how the good doctor was approved?
It's the county's medical director.
Yes. And if there's any other, is there any other options we have?
Well, traditionally, we had a contract with Dr. Benjamin Wee, and he's who we had used in the past. His contract was up, so we went out and put out a request for an RFQ, and the only person that responded was Dr. Enzeldua. So Dr. Wee didn't participate. We feel, staff feels that the, what he submitted to us was very comprehensive. He's offering a lot of different things from a medical director's perspective that we haven't gotten in the past. So it's our recommendation that we move forward with this because of the amount of time he's going to be spending with our first responders, paramedics, intermediates, and emergency medical technicians.
Paige, he still oversees EMS?
He oversees Sugar Land and Stafford, not Fort Bend EMS, no. Dr. Wee oversees Fort Bend EMS.
I knew that.
So that was backwards, yes, sir.
That's my question.
Okay. What's your motion?
I move that we accept the recommendation of staff.
I second that.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Smith made the motion. Councilman Ellen Cat made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven are public hearings. Item seven A is a zoning public hearing, seven A one.
And there are no zoning public hearings. We do, however, have seven B one, public hearings and related actions, ordinance of the city of Missouri City.
Did we take seven A one out? I missed it if we did.
Was there any?
I got one on my agenda.
There's no, we don't have...
Maybe I printed mine before.
That must have been a previous...
That was a previous agenda.
And that was perhaps something that moved to consent, as there were no changes from first reading.
All right, seven B.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, creating reinvestment zone number 12 encompassing Reserve 16 and Reserve 17, and block three of Lakeview Business Park, located in southwest of intersection of Buffalo, Runyon Pond and Road, in the city of Missouri City, Texas, making related findings and providing for severability.
Move of approval? This is the first of two readings. Councilman Marshall made the motion. Councilman Emery made the second. Is there discussion? Not, we'll vote, all those in favor. Motion carries. Item eight are appointments, there are none at this time. Item nine are authorizations. Item nine, A is consider rejecting all bids for IFB 100-13, construction of the Sienna North Regional Lift Station.
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Wyatt made the motion. Councilman Marshall made the second. Is there a discussion? Not, we'll vote, all those in favor. Motion carries. And B is to consider authorizing a renewal contract or a request or proposal for tax collection services. What did that? Councilman Wyatt made the motion. Is there a second? Councilman Marshall made the say, yes, sir.
Mayor and council, this item is to consider the authorization of renewal of the agreement with Lombarder, Guggen, Blair, and Sampson for tax, delinquent tax attorney services or request for proposals for delinquent tax services. We currently have an agreement with Lombarder that began July 1, 2010, and have renewed that for the last two years. Their renewal is, we must present with 60 days prior to the expiration date, and so therefore, that's why we're bringing this forth to you. We have experienced a good collection percentages on the delinquent taxes, and as compared to their other cities, I believe we submitted that with the packet as well, shows that other surrounding Fort Bend cities experience similar or lower percentages for your consideration.
Ed, what was the recommendation of the finance committee on this?
The finance committee was to bring this before the council for discussion.
What is our adjusted percentage rate combined with the collection rate from the Lombarder?
As of today, for this current year?
What was in the last audit? What was in our last financial report?
Ninety-eight percent.
So it's kind of hard to get a whole lot better.
It's been 99 for the last 10, 15, 20 years, and usually your last year, you're gonna collect a little bit more than the following year, until you bring it back up to 99 percent.
Ninety-nine is pretty strong.
Is this for one year, or is this for...
Yes, sir.
Two or three years?
No, it's for one year at a time. There are a total of five years within the original agreement that it can be renewed up to, but...
How many is left?
I think one after this one.
One after this one?
Yes, sir.
I thought it's initiated in 2010.
Yes, it was, July 2010, so 11, 12, 13, 14, 15.
Yeah, you're right.
And this is 13.
Okay.
And this is staff's recommendation to renew this?
Yes, sir, it is.
I guess if you believe that the best, then...
Well, I know there's been discussion in the past, guys, about, you know, looking at other agencies, and one of the things that I had suggested to Ed is there's two pieces to our contracts that we have. We have the tax, the link with tax piece, that's this piece. And then we have the fees and fines piece that is later on, like in December.
Right.
You know, right now, I think staff and everybody else have their hands full in trying to get their arms around the current budget. I would hate to see us change midstream while we're going through this. My suggestion to Ed was, and then in December, if we want to, that we put that piece out for, or a piece, and we start that process in December, not now. And if somebody else in December gets it, and we see how they operate, or how they don't operate, and, guys, let me tell you, there are other, there are a number of firms out there, small and large, that do this kind of work, and they don't all, they're not all as successful as some of the larger ones. They, they come on board and they say they're gonna do a great job, but they don't. The larger firms typically are much more capable of doing that, and I had just suggested to Ed that rather than them get bogged down right now in changing vendors with all they got on them right now, trying to find the money to do what we're talking about doing, that we not change this, and in December, put the fees and fines piece out for our FPs and give some other people an opportunity. But that's my suggestion, you all can...
That would be in October.
October, yeah, so it's not that far away.
Well, I think whatever we do, we need to look at what the overall product of result is.
Exactly right.
When you're talking 99%, you know, I don't care who's doing it.
Right. It's kind of hard to beat. I mean, 100% would be good, but I don't think you're ever gonna collect 100%. Maybe so, but...
He said 98, Jerry.
Well, it's even close enough now.
But that's, that's my suggestion, and if you all don't have a problem with that, come October, we can...
Well, and the fees and fine one also has performance measures that are built into that one.
Exactly. And we really haven't had an opportunity, we just put that in the last time. So we haven't had the opportunity to have a full year to look at the performance piece of the fees and fines, but we will by then.
You know, Mayor, in this case, I have no objection, but I also want us to be known as an equal employers who give opportunities to everybody. We cannot make an assumption that one company's doing well. Yes, they may be doing well, but there's other companies maybe equally doing well because we haven't tried yet. So, you know, even, I think we should open, I mean, in this case, it's too late. I mean, I'm supportive because of the high rate of performance, but the point I'm trying to make is this. I mean, we should reach out and give other people opportunities. Okay, even, even that company's doing the same equal performance, but at least other people have opportunity, especially, we have a lot of companies available out there, that's what I'm trying to say.
Well, what we owe to our citizen, bottom line, is just the best result.
Of course, of course, that's...
And sometimes that means that we really have to look, see that we're getting the right bang for the bucks for the citizens of this city. And, you know, we had a pile of money, you know, like some bigger cities that do that kind of stuff, that might be okay. But we, our money is narrowly fine, and we have to get the most for it whenever we go but, everything we do still have to be done in accordance with state law.
As Councilmember Wyatt, as you said, we're at 98. I think, I think our goal is to get 100. So it's not really to go back to the citizens saying that we're doing the best, we want to make sure we get the opportunity. I agree with Councilmember Nguyen on his discussion points, talking about the fact that this isn't the middle of it, going all the way through till October, as you said. But I would definitely, with small or big or large, I always feel that there's, as competition is there, there's always opportunity for better. That's my personal suggestion on this issue.
And I think we'll look at that performance measure that we put in place last time, because we did not have, and I think when we did that, there was not a performance measure on that piece. And we did that specifically for that reason. We wanted to have a performance standard that had not been there before, and they know that, so, anyway.
So will that come back through the council?
Yeah.
In October?
Just like this, just like this one does. Yeah. All right.
Do you consider the 2% to be, what, foreclosures or some mitigating circumstances, or...
It's just people are not gonna pay.
Or is it just not...
Well, they're not gonna pay, and you end up with a ju, and don't think about it, you end up with a judgment against them. At some point in time, that property changes hands and we collect.
I mean, there are some people that can make a declaration and don't pay taxes. I don't want to discuss that, but that does exist.
Right.
And I think the current plan, I mean, the current company goes through those payment plans and different options they have out there, so...
Sure.
Oh, yeah, 'cause the penalty's pretty stiff on them.
I think their report that they gave us last, last finance meeting, yeah, you did.
Some of the HOAs need to hire some of these firms to collect their HOA dues, because their HOA dues aren't near what that is. All right, there was a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Wyatt, and a second by Councilman Marshall. If there's no other discussion, we'll vote, all those in favor. Motion carries. Item 10 are ordinances, 10A.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, amending Chapter 78, solid waste of the Missouri City Code, amending the rules and regulations related to solid waste, providing penalty, providing for repeal, and providing for severability.
We just like putting a solid waste item on every single agenda, that is.
I'll second.
Gee, my knee. Council, Mayor Pro Tem Wyatt made the motion, Councilman Smith made the second, right?
Yes.
All those in favor? Motion carries. And this baby's gonna be on here again. This is the first of two readings.
Correct.
Holy mackerel. Item 11 are resolutions.
11A, a resolution of the city council, the city of Missouri... 11A, a resolution of the city council, the city of Missouri City, Texas, approving the submission of the grant application for an automobile burglary and theft prevention task force for the Texas Department of Motor Vehicles, Automobile Burglary and Theft Authority Office and containing other provisions related thereto.
I move that.
Second.
So Smith and Councilman Ellen Cat, let me mention to you all, and I've done my part, but it goes back, if you all have your, have any connections with any of the elected officials, especially on the Senate side, you need.
That's on the House of Representatives.
It's the House side, I guess it is, yes.
They have total support and sentage.
You need to, well, it doesn't hurt to tell them both.
Absolutely.
But come on up, John. Anyway, there is a, there's an item that you need to let your friends and the legislature know that they need to support the funding of this project so that we get our money for it.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, so let Roy know. I think John's right, the Senate probably is okay with it. We've got some House people that if you all can let any of the House representatives know that you'd like them to support. I honestly don't see that there's going to be a problem there. It's a budget issue, but every city in the state of Texas I saw was on the distribution list.
They're heavily lobbying to increase the funds for this grant.
Is there anybody objecting to it?
No, what they're finding out is most of the House of Representatives are freshmen congressmen and they know nothing about this program.
But I mean, there's nobody, I can't imagine anybody up there that's lobbying these guys to objecting to it. So if they don't, they got too many other things they're fighting. If they don't have anybody objecting to it, this seems to be unanimous.
There's nobody objecting to it. We just need to get the word out, let them know it exists and to support it.
And John, we, I know that we've just received some of our grants, have we not? Been getting emails that looks like we've gotten some payments for some of our smaller grants, have we not?
Yes.
Okay, do you remember which ones they were?
Not offhand, I know we've gotten some, the, some seizure funds and things like that from things that this type of grant has helped us bring in.
Is this grant for one year or for, what's the?
This is a continuation grant. This grant is for one year.
Yeah, because they, they can only fund the budget one year at a time. They can't, they can't bind the next legislation to a budget like that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, I, oh, did we vote? All those in favor? Item 12 are city council announcements. Are there any announcements, anyone? Yes, John, you got any? Danny?
We don't want to talk about you.
Oh, he's smiling? No, I don't even want to talk about it.
You've attended that before.
Oh, yeah. That's RuPaul now? All right, that's it, thanks. We have closed executive session?
We do not.
We do not, isn't that nice? All right.